Welcome everybody, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is our Board of Trustees meetings for July. We do have a quorum, we are recording this meeting, we're not live streaming, but we are recording. And we're gonna start with recording the attendance. Should I just call out the name Sarah, or if you wanna do it from your end so you can?
Sure, sure. Bella Gorman, Darren Rose, Evan Prisbarowski, Gregory Theos, Jill Schaefer, Maura Webster, Raul Porus, and Samini Sampa.
Thank you. Bella, did we get any requests for public comment? I don't see anybody other than... So there not be any public comment? I'm just gonna make a quick comment, because I think it's worth marking the occasion. First of all, this is our first full board meeting for this school year, so welcome to 23-24. We didn't have a special board meeting in July, but this is our first full board meeting. That also means that we're welcoming Dr. Mobley here with us as our executive director. So, welcome as your first full board meeting with us. I know you've hit the ground running in the last twenty-something days, so this is gonna be, you know, your first opportunity to address the whole Board of Trustees. And also, we're welcoming two new board members, so welcome Darren and Evan. I know Evan, you've been participating in the board meetings, at least in there. It's not no stranger to the board, he's been already involved with with helping us with fundraising and development, so we're very excited to have two new board members this year.
And Greg Theos.
And Greg Theos as a new teacher rep. And I know I mentioned this in the last board meeting, but I believe that means that we have a very well-represented alumni in this meeting today from the same class, right? So it's great to see that, I think that that's worth highlighting, it's a historical moment, I would say. So this is gonna be an exciting year, in my opinion. We have a lot of important things happening in the school in the short term, and we're looking forward for the future. Obviously, you guys know that we're gearing up for making a decision about our building project in September, and you know, there'll be an update on that today, and then more of the plan, how we're gonna do that, etc. Obviously, that's what we have in the horizon, but we also have a school year to begin and getting ready for, so you will hear more about that. And then the other thing I would say, that kinda looking at the long term, I know there's probably gonna be many things that are gonna come out throughout the year, they're gonna become priorities and they're gonna become important. But thinking about the future and how we get ourselves ready, 2025 is our year for charter renewal. So that means that this school year, there are some things that happen to prepare for that. No, we don't have to get ourselves ahead of that too much, you know, there's a lot going on right now, but I'm just thinking about the year ahead and how we're getting ready for this, and I know we have a strong board, and you guys are committed to the values and the passion at AMSA, so looking forward to this year, I'll put it that way, and that's, you know, how how I share my excitement now that we're in here in July. I'm sure things will get busier and more exciting throughout the year, but I just wanted to say that before we got into the mechanical parts of the meeting, which is usually what we start with. Let me ask, is there anybody interested in being the timekeeper for today's meeting?
Uh, uh, voluntold.
Everybody wants. Alright, I see so many raising their hand, even though she's so mute, alright. Hopefully, it will be an easy job and we'll stay on track, I think we have a lot of little things that probably will go by quickly. Alright, so first vote, in the consent agenda, it's approval of the minutes from the June 1st meeting. That is on the packet, I'll take a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
So Samini?
Maura.
Second by Maura.
Okay, I will call
Yes, please.
Bella Gorman.
Yes.
Darren Rose.
Yes.
Evan Prisbarowski.
Yes.
Gregory Theos.
Yes.
Jill Schaefer.
Yes.
Maura Webster.
Yes.
Raul Porus.
Yes.
Sheila Kelly.
Yes.
Samini Sampa.
Yes.
Everyone.
Motion passes. The next one's approval of the minutes of the special board meeting, if you remember, that was on July 11th. We basically just met to go into executive session, so the minutes are pretty simple, but we still need to approve them, so I'll take a motion to approve those.
So moved, Maura.
Second.
Second by Samini.
Samini, second?
Yes.
Alright, I'll record. Bella Gorman.
Yes.
Darren Rose.
Yes.
Evan Prisbarowski.
Yes.
Gregory Theos.
Yes.
Jill Schaefer.
Yes.
Maura Webster.
Yes.
Raul Porus.
Yes.
Sheila Kelly.
Yes.
And Samini Sampa.
Yes.
The motion passes. Alright, third item on the agenda is our election of the vice chair. So I know everybody on the board knows this, but just to make sure this is known publicly, you may have noticed that Don Capello hasn't been on the board meetings in the last couple meetings, she has excused herself and resigned from the board. I'd like to thank Don personally, because she was very helpful in the last couple of years in taking a lot of the work that we do as a board and bringing her expertise. So I regret her decision, but I respect it, so I'd like to thank Don for her service. One of the things from a process perspective that that causes, because she's an officer, that leaves the vice chair position open. So, I know I reach out to all of you, if anybody was interested to let me know, but you know, now's the opportunity, as we, you know, we need to vote on a new vice chair. So I would like to open it up, and if anybody has any comments or wants to put their selves, you know, their names forward for becoming the vice chair.
Excuse me, Raul, now, this is for assuming the remainder of the position.
Yes, yes, just to be clear for the remainder of the term, because officers have two-year terms, and the first year of our current officers was the past year, so it would be from now till June 30th, 2024. Thank you for clarifying.
I'm happy to serve the remainder of Don's term as vice chair.
Thank you, Maura. Anybody else? We actually use discussing governance as a process for, you know, if we need to make it an election, but... Alright, I didn't hear anybody over email when I reached out earlier, so I'm not cutting it short, and can ensure that if I had heard, we would have brought it up, so alright. So maybe we can make a motion to accept and approve Maura Webster to be the vice chair for the remainder of the term?
So I will make the motion to approve Maura Webster to assume the remainder of Don Capello's term as vice chair. I'll second, Bella.
Excellent.
Alright, I will call. Bella Gorman.
Yes.
Darren Rose.
Yes.
Evan.
Yes.
Gregory Theos. Jill Schaefer.
Yes.
Sorry. Maura Webster.
I'm staying.
Okay. Raul Porus.
Yes.
Sheila Kelly.
Yes.
And Samini Sampa.
Yes.
And the motion passes, congratulations, Maura. Like I said, it's gonna be an exciting year. So it's good to be an officer.
Excellent, looking forward to it.
Thank you for stepping up for it. Alright, now the real exciting stuff, so we included the student handbook changes in the packet. The two votes coming up are kind of related to each other, because we discussed them in governance. The governance committee will recommend approval of the changes and the annual report. So the two things that we're running on is the student handbook changes and the annual report itself. These are the kinds of things that maybe it's worth bringing out of the consent agenda, maybe discussing a little bit. I did reach out to everybody to submit any questions they had in advance with, to Sarah, in case you had any, I don't believe there were any, but, so we don't have, oh, Mike is on, even though he's on vacation. I know we're discussing some governance, but Mike, did you wanna give a quick overview of what those proposed changes are? Or do you want somebody that's not on vacation to...
Just wanna make sure you guys can hear me.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I had to log in from my phone, my computer's not allowing me to get on. No, I mean, I think that this year, we don't, we do not have any, I wouldn't really classify anything as a significant change or any major new additions. You all have the information in front of you, I'm here to answer any questions. I think we basically wanted to address a few areas, or one area of, you know, just clarifying some things around makeup, slash face paint, slash costumes, and things of that nature, which has to do directly with student safety. You know, we had one other situation, or one other addition or subtraction, I guess, where we eliminated the automatic fifty-five numerical average for a student if they exceed the unexcused absence limit. As advised by our attorney, students would lose credit in these, would potentially lose credit in these situations. Performance, or their grade that they earned would not be impacted, or have an impact on that, so I don't know if anybody else has any other questions, I don't even have it up in front of me, because I'm still trying to get my computer. I think the other one was academic dishonesty, we just added one piece about the AI and using that. When the expectation is to pass in or turn in your own work, you know, we just added AI ChatGPT as in one example that students are not to use to pass, to, you know, turn in work that is intended to be their own.
Just a quick question on that, what type of validation is used to confirm that any type of AI is used in work assignments?
Yeah, so we have, I think that there's some, I don't know if there's a foolproof tool out there right now, but I know the last, I mean, this is a moving target, as you can probably imagine. Even Mr. Theos here, who's a computer science teacher, he may be able to chime in, even provide more clarity than I can, but the last, I know, when we, you know, in May and June, there were some detection tools, if you will, that could give you the probability, pretty much, of, you know, flagging something as most likely, you know, most likely the person submitting the work used an AI tool of some sort. That's what we were working with, I don't even know the names of them, I think that there's a couple different ones out there, but we have been using those, and that just opens up a conversation with the student and the family. You know, that goes under review. We do use TurnItIn.com traditionally, through our, especially through our English department, we have a subscription through TurnItIn. That looks at plagiarism if things are lifted directly from internet sources or other past papers that were submitted historically, so that's a very nice tool, but AI introduces a whole new sort of obstacle, if you will, to really narrow it down. Mr. Theos, I know you're out there, I don't know if you have any names of any of the tools that can be used, but I do know that there are some out there that can at least spark conversation.
I don't, other than TurnItIn, which I'm pretty sure that the English department uses, I don't know then, like the specifics of any of the validation tools, I don't even know that they all necessarily give like a probability. It is kind of a pretty fraught landscape, these tools are not... I personally have concerns, and I think a lot of other CS teachers have concerns, and I think this is something we're going to be dealing with for a while, which means I'm not sure, I think the implication of that is perhaps it's not best to say exactly what tools we'll be using in the handbook. In my own experience as a teacher, and I've only really had to go through this once in this past year with regard to AI, it's it is rare to get in a fight with a student where something is clearly not done by them, and they don't eventually admit that themselves. It doesn't actually come up that often, but your point is well taken, Evan, I think like that's something that's on our minds. Yeah, and I genuinely is also curious about just the sheer amount of instances that that happens within the school system, don't have those numbers in front of me, but yeah, I guess the best bet if TurnItIn.com has some level of, you know, comparative analysis, whereas, you know, if TurnItIn keeps like a repository of all the, all the different essays, information that students submit, you know, it can make that comparison of language and structure, so maybe, I don't know, but it's, yes, it is ever so changing. Deal with it every other day, so, just curious.
I will say from my perspective, the course I taught this spring, I had a student from another country actually hand in two assignments and ask me to tell him which one was AI and which one wasn't, like this is the glory of graduate and master's level programs, where they test the teacher all the time. But it's very interesting, TurnItIn does have a relatively new AI indicator, but it's not, like you said, it's not foolproof, right, it's just sort of telling you that it can process it, or it can't process it, and it might be, or like, so it's really not that helpful. I do find it interesting, though, as a tool to spark creativity, but also to test the kid's writing ability, because AI does not write very well. I mean, some of the things they put out, sure, but it is actually, I think, gonna give our students a little bit of a leg up in some instances when allowed to really fact-check and learn how to check their work, check their editing, right? Like, I think there's always an opportunity for learning from it. I don't love it, though. Even in my world, like in my marketing and messaging world, it's helpful to a certain extent, and not.
I'm gonna add, though, that one of the things we talked about in governance is that we, so first of all, we can't solve the whole problem. We're just trying to make sure that it somehow captured in the handbook to make sure that students knew explicitly that that's not the intention when teachers assign a word that expecting them to turn their own work in. But one of the things that we talked about in governance is that we also didn't want to be restrictive, so restrictive, that it couldn't be used as a tool when you explicitly allow it to potentially, and I'm just making this up, that teacher could say, hey, use ChatGPT to generate something, and then use that result to explain how you would have written it differently, you know, totally made up assignment, but we didn't wanna be so restricted that such an assignment would immediately be a violation of the handbook, because the handbook doesn't allow to use ChatGPT, right? So that was kind of intentional, what we discussed in governance, and if you read the way it was written, it will, it just explicitly says, you know, when, unless otherwise explicitly authorized or allowed by, or asked by the teacher, it will be considered a case of dishonesty.
I do think, so I got a comment or two from the staff, which given that it's summer is a miracle. I got a comment or two from the staff about this, and I think it might be prudent to add some clause in the middle of like uses of AI that significantly contribute to the final product, or something like that. With my mind, what my mind goes to is cases like, for example, I'm working on an art project, I know what I want to do, I do it entirely myself, I start with two colors in mind, and I'm just trying to think of like a third one that would sort of go well with these first two, and I use some tool for that, like things of that nature where they're small, and where students might assume they are allowed, even if the teacher did not explicitly say like, yes, you can do that. I don't know that we want to consider those like violations or violations of the same magnitude, if that makes sense. I think it might, it might say like, and another example would be spell check, which is actually starting to be done with machine learning, and not just sort of the rule lists that everyone is used to from Microsoft Word in like 2005. Like those sorts of things, I don't think we want to penalize per se. So I think it might just be worth putting in the rule that like, it actually has to be a significant portion of the work that is affected.
Yeah, I hear you, Greg. We can think of a way to word that if necessary.
Mike, maybe we could just say, I think we have to think of a couple of things, and Greg and I talked today. Number one, it's under the section of academic dishonesty, which implies intentionality to be dishonest, right? The other thing is that we have to keep in mind that every situation that I think Mike and his team deal with, it has like a due process to it, right? So you may think that the child has intentionally been academically dishonest, but you would meet with the student, you would talk it through, you'd probably get some parent involvement in there, you continue to talk it through, and you land somewhere. But I don't think it would hurt the wording if the wording said in addition to, you know, the portion where it says the teacher explicitly allows it, you know, uses of AI, so which what Greg just said, uses of AI that would significantly contribute to the final product is considered academic dishonesty, or situations in which a teacher explicitly instructs the student not to use AI. So I think we can wordsmith it a little bit if we get, you know, just the blessing to add AI to the section of the handbook around academic dishonesty.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Yeah, I agree with that as well.
So I guess for today, maybe we're okay with, and again, this was the governance recommendation to approve the way it was written, but if maybe we can, there can be refinement, if any changes need to be made.
Raul, if you want, for this one, if we could bring it back, just this one for a second reading on, what is it, August?
The special board meeting, yeah.
Yeah. We could wordsmith it and then just bring it back for a second reading at that point.
Alright, what specifically is the scope of what you want to say? Evan, you said you agreed, I was just wondering, I mean, the way it's worded right now is the use of AI is a form of cheating when students do not have explicit permission to use AI to craft it, right? I guess I'm looking to see what the delta would be that we would bring back.
That's fair, I mean, it's kind of all encompassing when it states, you know, do not have explicit permission. It just comes down to the actual, like I foresee there being a potential situation where, like given Greg's example of, okay, here's your art project, and the teacher doesn't give that explicit permission, because maybe that's not within their scope of what they expected for the project. Then student comes along, does a certain chunk of their project with it, and at the end of the day, I don't think it's really gonna be even something that's discussed with that assignment, given the nature of it, so maybe I am leaning more towards the fact that this does kind of cover all the bases with, you know, explicit permission, so on and so forth. Yeah.
Yeah, and also just to be clear, because this exact conversation happened in governance, the summary document that's in the packet shows the changes, but when you read it in context in the student handbook, the page where this is brought off is in the academic dishonesty section. So it's basically, in context, it makes it more evident that we're saying that for cases of plagiarism, using artificial intelligence to generate your work that's supposed to be yours is, you know, considered dishonest approach. Which is different than generically, you know, saying using AI is dishonest use of technology, right? So I think the context makes it more clear and, you know, less open to interpretation. But again, if anybody feels that, if we agree that we need to be more clear on the language, we can revise it. So the real pragmatic question about the changes in the handbook is do we feel good enough with the proposed change to approve? And then we can always refine, you know, if needed.
I mean, just feels like there's moving ground here, based on what Greg is talking about and what Evan is talking about. So I would be comfortable going forward with this and waiting to see more, and I'm sure us and everybody else in the world is gonna be looking at this and finding better language to describe what we want and what we don't, and that's okay. That's my conclusion, based on the conversation we had in governance as well, because we debated this for a while there.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Sixty-five years ago, the same conversation was happening about use of calculators.
Yeah.
So my guess is that this policy is gonna get revised, you know, once a year for the next five years, and to some degree, that's okay.
So before the board decides to take a vote on all of the changes, I just wanted to also chime in a little bit about the class dues, just to make sure that everybody watching really understands the whole idea of class dues, because again, I thank Greg for a meeting with me today and giving me a lot of AMSA history and whatnot, and class dues had been tried, and then there were some questions. So first and foremost, the class dues is not gonna put a burden on our teaching staff, because class dues will be handled through my school box, am I correct, Mariana? And she's saying yes and shaking her head.
I couldn't find my mic for a minute. Um, yes, so that will be handled through the business office, through my school box.
So there'll be no worry about when are the teachers gonna collect the, you know, the class dues and keep track of it and whatnot. So that'll all be done through the business office, because we wouldn't wanna put that burden on teachers. The other thing that we wanna make really clear, I think, to families, is that, two things. Number one, AMSA will definitely continue to have dress-down days, because they're fun for kids, or I think they're fun for staff, and there'll still be plenty of dress-down days, or as many as you've had before, planned by whomever does that great work in the school. But we will no longer be charging kids per dress-down day. Participating is just going to be an AMSA thing. Class dues will be what supplement some of the senior costs, whereas the dress-down day money used to supplement the senior cost. So we're making that shift, just because we seem to think it makes better sense, and then the other piece of it is that oh, I'm losing my train of thought, there will be financial assistance for families with the class dues if they need that.
And that's another benefit of centralizing it.
Yeah, because you don't get any benefit of like financial assistance for the dress-down days, and so the team, Mike, Amanda, and the team that worked on this really thought that it addressed an equity issue that they saw with having to pay for dress-down dates.
Yeah, I just, I'll just add two quick, quick items on that as well. It's a much, it will be a much cleaner process this way, rather than having to collect physical money in big manila envelopes once a month, or if there's a spirit week, then it's every day, you're collecting pennies, dimes, quarters, dollar bills, trying to find change for twenty-dollar bills, etc. We had people physically counting this money, handing it over to Leanna over in the business office. Mr. Theos won't have to walk around the classroom and ask students for a dollar and take up the first ten minutes of his class anymore either. This will all be, like you said, Lisa, centralized and it'll just be cleaner, smoother, more equitable, and just better overall.
Yeah, and I think it might be worth making that crystal clear to the staff, because this was one of the other things that I got some comments about. I have one person who said like, quote, "It was a disaster when we tried it before." And so just given how little information there's been about it, just sending out an email that says like, whatever everyone just said, you know, "Don't worry, teachers, you will literally not be involved in this process." Everyone will be like, "Perfect, great, love it." Hundred percent of people.
I'll mention that, yeah, that's a good point, Greg, I'll mention it the first day everybody comes back, they can hear it in person, it'll be a great way to get an applause at the beginning of the year.
Will definitely be an applause line, not having to act as tax collector.
Alright, I think we hit most of them. You mentioned the makeup, you mentioned the, I guess the one we're gonna talk about is the change in senior privileges and the defining administrative intentions for seniors, the number of tardies and whatnot, so I think that's pretty clear. I don't know if anybody has any questions, or wanting to ask Mike about that. And, oh, and there was one, actually, I don't think you mentioned this, Mike, but there was a comment there about a student directory, which we decided to strike it out to make sure that there was no assumption that the school will be involved in sharing students or families' contact information, the comment was there before, because the PTO used to do that, and the PTO can continue to do that, but the PTO is an independent group from the administration, and anybody that chooses to be sharing their information in the directory will have to share that information with the PTO, so it's cleaner to make sure that we're explicitly saying that this is not handled by the administration, this is handled by the PTO. So that was the other change that we talked about. Any other questions or any of the other changes that we didn't talk about? I think we hit them all. All right. So with that, I can take a motion to approve the proposed changes in the student handbook as presented.
Motion to approve the proposed changes in the handbook as presented. Bella.
I'll second that. Oh.
Evan, second.
Greg?
I think it was a tie, but maybe I'll give this one to Evan.
I'll give it to Evan. You got the next one.
All right. Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Darren Rose?
Yes.
Evan Prisperowski?
Yes.
Gregory Theos?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Mara Webster?
Yes.
Raul Porus?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
And Samini Sempah.
Yes.
Excellent. The motion passes. The next one is our annual report. And as the name implies, this is something that we put together every year. And it highlights, you know, our key design elements as part of how we show that we're sticking to our charter and, you know, achieving the outcomes that we set out to achieve. So there's a lot of data in this document. It takes a lot of work. It's one of the reasons why we wanted to have this meeting towards the end of the month, this month, to give everybody time to close out the details after the end of the school year. So first of all, I'd like to acknowledge all the effort that has been put together by Sarah and the team. And pretty much everybody in the school gets involved with this because there's so much information about what we do. So I'm pretty sure everybody reviewed it and, you know, took a look at numbers, et cetera. Just for the sake of throwing something out there, I did ask when we reviewed this in governance about numbers, you know, there's information there about student discipline. And it showed a number of students that surprised me because it showed, you know, the total number of students was nine hundred eighty-one. And I have it burned in my brain that our maximum enrollment is nine hundred sixty-seven. So how is that, you know, higher number? And it turns out that it's because it's individual named students throughout the school year. So there might be students that leave and, you know, others that replace them. So that's why that number can be higher than enrollment. But it was clarified to me that we have not been over enrolled at all in the year. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear as well for everybody.
It was added, excuse me, Raul, I did add that sentence in there to the annual report that the reason why.
Awesome. No, that's great. I think you got ahead of me. So then, that was one thing, just to give an example. But if you flip through the report, you'll notice that there is information about, you know, our key design elements and, you know, our charter and discipline data, like I just mentioned. And then there's an academic success section that talks about student performance and how we deliver our program. And there's a lot of financial information there towards the end, which, you know, the more we go through, talking about finances later today and throughout the school year, you're going to be intimately familiar with those numbers throughout the year. But this is more of a, kind of a financial report of the year as a whole. And there's mention of the accountability plan. And again, for those that are not familiar with what we do as a board, part of, you know, we own the charter. We are the way that the state keeps, you know, makes sure that ANSA is sticking to what we said we were going to do in a charter. And the accountability plan is the specific goals and things that are tied to the charter that we need to report on in the annual report. So part of that evidence from the accountability plan is in the annual report. So again, that's all in there. So let me, other than getting into the details, just throw it out there. Does anybody have any questions or any clarification we might want about the data or the contents of the annual report?
Raul, I had one about the rosters. I assume if somebody served part of the year, that they would be included in the list. And I think we hired a director of development during the period being reported, and they may not have been included in the in the list of management. Oops.
The director of development, are you talking about Marcy or are you talking about?
Did I miss her?
Yeah, so I think you're talking about page thirty, or then I'm
Page thirty, yeah.
An administrative roster.
Yes, okay, I will add that.
That's a good point. Thank you, Darren. And it's particularly important to make sure that everybody knows that we are making the effort and making the investment and doubling down on our developing our, you know, developing our development, if I can use that redundancy, by bringing Marcy in. So it's a good catch. Any other comments about the annual report? I noticed a lot of data on it.
I know. I've had it fixed for tonight.
All right. There being no comments or questions, I think we can take a vote to approve the annual report as presented.
So moved with Darren's edit?
That was a good one. And seconded by Darren.
Great. So I will call names. Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Mara?
Yes.
Saul?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
And Samini?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you. And once again, thank you, Sarah, and thank you all the team on putting that together in a timely fashion. And, you know, this is part of our compliance, the kinds of things we have to do. And it's worth celebrating the success that we show with this kind of report. Awesome. So that was the voting part of the meeting. So thank you, everybody, for your votes on that. And I'm going to turn it over tomorrow for our capital campaign update. Or imagine campaign.
I'm just going to give a quick update, and I know, Raul, you had a piece in the latest newsletter or campaign update that went out to the community. And I know that Dr. Mobley, you're actually on campus, so you could probably share what exciting stuff is happening there in the hard hat zone. But the beginning of the project has started with the road that kind of is going to encompass campus. So I'll save that for you to talk about. But we have really embarked on the first phase of the campaign. So the phase one goal is that two million dollar goal. In full disclosure, there is going to be more than one phase to this project. And so we're working down that road. I don't have any number updates to share with everybody today. As you'll hear, the development committee was actually postponed, the summer meeting was. So we're going to have very, very limited updates on numbers, except that I think Marcy's calendar is pretty booked this summer. So that's where we're at. And we already talked about the Cummings Foundation at our last meeting, so we know about that grant.
Yes. Thank you.
Actually, on the note, I believe they're doing presentations for the Lowell work in the prosthetics on Friday at one, so. Just something to be aware of.
What was that? Evan, I didn't hear that.
The students from the grant are doing their presentations on the animal prosthetics project that the grant went towards on Friday at one, so if anybody's around, I'll be there.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Yeah, the Cummings grant presentation is tomorrow at 1:00 PM.
Yeah.
You guys gotten a sneak peek at the projects?
Not me. I wasn't at school this week. I was there the whole last week, but they all worked at UMass Lowell, not here on that one.
So how do we stay informed about these kinds of things with a little more notice?
We, Mike Finkel actually should have sent the information a couple of days earlier. Like, you know, once the timing is confirmed and everything, at 1:00 PM, Mike should have, we got the message from Mike.
Okay, and it's at the school at ANSA?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I got an email. So many, I'm not sure if Ford did. I saw it on Instagram, so there's that.
And the parents got the email this morning.
Yeah, so my daughter's doing that camp, and so we got the email this morning. But, yeah, I think as much notice, I don't know when that was determined, so maybe it wasn't possible to do it with more notice, but.
No, that's good. I'm glad to hear that.
The actual, like, it was already scheduled in the two-week camp and everything, but the timing was not confirmed until two days ago, I think. So the kids should have known when they are going to present, like, no, they were supposed to, kept in touch, like, you know, at home, what they were trying, we felt that the kids would have gone home and explained everything. But when it comes to sending to the community, I think we sent it a couple of days earlier. Mike actually posted it on Instagram, like Evan was saying, and an email went out, and it was taken care of on that one.
I guess what's worth highlighting is that we're, I feel like it was yesterday when we got that grant, and we're already showing what we're doing with it and what. So those kinds of things, that kind of communication, and making sure that the funders see the the results of what we do, I think it's going to be important to showcase, so we keep getting more.
You know, once, like, you know, we like the organized chaos and we tend to try well in that kind of process, especially we, people who have been there for a long time.
Yeah.
So we try to do our best.
No, it's all good. It's all good. All right. Any other questions for more on the capital campaign? All right. Now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mobley. You got the floor for your very first executive director update as executive director of ANSA.
No pressure. No pressure, right? Thank you. So I did provide you a written, maybe more detailed first report. I didn't find anything to create one of those wonderful PowerPoints that Ellen used to do. They were amazing. I watched several of them, and she's really good at it, so I have big shoes to fill there.
Dr. Mobley, would you be able to share that PDF as you talk through it? Just because I didn't have access to it in advance, I think sometimes the links don't work for some of us. Sarah, I should have contacted you to let you know. I just don't seem to have access at all.
All right. Sarah, since you have it, can, yeah, you're the best. Uh, let me see now. Let me find it. So I'll just keep talking while Sarah's looking. The Loop Project, the Loop Road Project is definitely moving along. Leanna and I meet every Friday with the entire team. There's been a lot going on. They have finished the retaining wall in the back of the property, which is going to hold the wall around the upper school. And they were, this morning, I, this morning, I actually went looking for the students working in the UMass Lowell Cummings Project. And I walked in and I said, "Where are the, you know, UMass kids?" And Sandy said to me, "Out in Lowell." And I thought she was kidding me and giving me a hard time. And she said, "No, no, no, they're really in Lowell." So I walked through the building and took a tour, and I can see the work out back. And so they're moving right along. There, there's a slight concern that some of the, it has to do, I think, with the Catch Basin and I'm new to this construction stuff, is not here yet. So they've got a great plan. If this does take us, you know, into when the kids come, they've got it all planned out. They'll use some road plates over that area. And they will clearly only work during non-school hours. So I think we were very happy with the plan. They're hoping it doesn't get there, but just in case. Leanna and I actually went to the planning board meeting Monday night. And on Monday night, they approved the plans to merge the two lots into one lot, making way for the new building. And in addition to that, on Tuesday morning, the site plan was approved. So we have an approved site plan. We have the lots now zoned how they need to be zoned. And the first part of the building permitting has been pushed through so that ANSA still remains under all the codes that were in place before July 1st. So that's three really, really great pieces of news. The next step for the new building project is for them to release what's called a rough guaranteed maximum price or a rough GMP to the finance committee. And the finance committee will get a sneak peek of that before the full board does. And the our managers will be working out anything, any inconsistencies or anything else like that, to have the full GMP, the Guaranteed Maximum Price, to the board on September 11th. And then we know we have the board date that Friday, the 14th, I think. 14th, am I right? On that, I think, okay. So that's kind of where we are with the Loop Road and the new building. Great progress on the Loop Road and where we are with the new building. Leanna and Eric have been working on a spreadsheet to identify ANSA's capital projects. And they're going to be working together to finalize that so that they can present it to the board at the special meeting on August 31st, so that the board has a solid idea of all of the other expenses that ANSA is slated to face in addition to this, the new building. And so that you can make an informed decision when they get that guaranteed maximum price. We're continuing to work with the academic department chairs to negotiate their contracts. We have another meeting August 9th, and then one scheduled after that for August 22nd, should we need it. Under reporting obligations, Sarah and the team completed the annual report that you just voted on. And we also completed filling out the remainder of the Student Opportunities Act. Ellen prepared the bulk of the work for the report, and I finalized it. I'll be meeting with Mike and his team to kind of go over the goals that we set within that act. That act provides money in the per pupil tuition for ANSA, so it's important for us to stay on top of that. Leanna has begun the audit process. And registrar Linda is very busy finalizing registrations and also meeting with the frequent job-ins that want to know how they can get their child into ANSA. So it's exciting for me to see how many people want to come to ANSA for sure. Linda has her hands full. And Lynn McCleskey is busy working on transportation. I don't think I have to go over the handbook highlights because we just discussed that. And then personally, I've been very busy internally getting up to speed with the construction project and meeting our staff. I attended the PTO uniform sale. I unfortunately am not available at 1:00 tomorrow to see the products, but I'm certainly hoping that Mr. Finkel sends along some photos from it. I've established my own Instagram account, so you can actually follow me and watch me as I go to different things and meet our families and meet our supporters. I've spent some time with the Mass Public Charter School Association, learning more about our charter world and getting up to speed on that. And other than that, I think things are going great. Had a great interview with Greg today, learned a lot, it was very, very insightful. And I thank him for spending as much time with me as he did. So it's been going wonderful.
Thank you, Lisa. It's hard to realize that it's only been about 20 days with everything that you just talked about, and I think that's been happening at the school in the middle of the summer. So thank you for hitting the ground running. And I'd say for those of you that remember when we were having discussions last year with Lisa about, you know, what her plan was, when she was going to come or whatnot, one of the things that we always said we're looking for is that she came with open ears to try to listen first and understand what's going on in the school. And so far, that's what she's focused on. So it's, it's been a busy last 20 days, I guess. It's been a busy last 20 days, I guess. All right. Any um comments, questions for Lisa? Words of encouragement or advice? All right. With hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you again, Lisa, for the report. Um we don't have Laura here on today, so there's no apparent rep update and being in the middle of the summer, I'm pretty sure it would have been pretty uh thin anyways. Uh so we'll skip that. And just like we had Lisa's first CD report, we're gonna welcome Greg Teos here as a as a teacher rep. Uh who I'm sure will have a lot to bring forward from our teachers. So take it away, Greg, with the faculty rep update.
All right. Hello, everyone. Um. First off, I do want to thank Lisa. We did have a meeting today. It was great. She let me talk at her for. Like an hour and a half, which, you know, being a teacher, that's all we want is just people who let us talk to them. Um so. That was good. Um likewise, with the the parent report, there's not much to talk about because it's summer. It's been decently quiet. Um what what word I've gotten has mostly been. Reactive just to stuff that's going around, like the yearbook changes. Um I sent out a survey about that a few days ago. So I got a few responses about that. So you have already heard most of what I have heard. Um the one thing. I did want to make a point of talking about, and I'm sure that this is not the last time I'm going to talk about it, so. Let me just get my soapbox constructed and ready here. Um is teacher pay? Because especially in light of the teachers that left this past school year. Um many of whom were leaving just for better paying jobs in other districts. Um. Especially in light of Peter Prue leaving, who sent that open letter to the board that I'm sure you've all read. At this point, it I do have to say it is the number one concern just in the background constantly, always. Um both. That is expressed to me as faculty rep and that is also just expressed to me as another teacher, even before I was faculty rep, you know, the one the one thing that people were always concerned about was. Pay, 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 pay. Um and given that we are renegotiating the union contract, but we, you guys. Will be renegotiating the union contract um this coming year. Uh hopefully not have to do it for another three years. Um it is it is something that I hope is going to be on your minds. Um. Oh, I do have permissions to share screen. Lovely. Um I did have something I want to show you guys. This is just, this is me being a teacher during the summer who's bored. Um so I I did. Take a look at some of the numbers, both to better understand the situation myself. Um and have something to show you guys. Uh I can make this bigger if people need to see it. I'll explain in just a minute. Um I'm hoping to have more information than this at a later date. It turns out that the budgets of of like the public school district in Marlborough and Hudson are not available in a very friendly format to be broken down. Um unless you want to sift through sixty pages of spreadsheets that aren't even that are like PDFs, so you can't even copy and paste them into Excel. At any rate, this information, it's all from the the DEES website, and I think it highlights um. A pretty major anxiety that teachers at AMSA have pretty well. So. Just in case you can't read any of the text, the the two columns that I think are important here are average teacher salary. I grabbed from AMSA from our four core towns, the public school districts in those towns. I don't have just the high school or middle middle school because DEES does not publish. Data that is that fine grained. Um they will only do it for the whole district, so this is also as of 2021. Um so I grabbed our four core towns. I grabbed three other essentially random charter schools. I could literally Googled good charter high schools Massachusetts because I figured. That is roughly what a parent who is considering the school would do or something like that. Um and then I was also meeting with Lisa earlier today and she was curious about the numbers for King Philip, so I grabbed those as well. So the the two things that I think are important to note here are average salaries, which I think speak for themselves. Um. But also, I think perhaps an even more important number is the percent of expenditures from the district on teacher salaries. Because of course, you know, Marlborough is going to have a different standard of living, perhaps from Maynard will have a different cost of living. Um and so teacher teacher pay might vary just based on those sorts of things. I think oftentimes it can be more informative not to look at the absolute number of how much your teacher's being paid, but. How much of the school's budget is going to teacher pay? Um and so you can see here compared to the other charter schools, AMSA is roughly in the middle. Sturgis seems to be an outlier. I don't know what they're doing on the Cape, but. They're spending fifty percent of their school budget on teacher pay. All power to them. Um but compared to the public schools, with the exception of King Philip, all of our, well. Looking at our core towns, I suppose I should say, all of them seem to spend around forty percent of their school's budget. On um on teacher pay, whereas AMSA only spends thirty-three point one percent. Um I I'm not going to talk you ear off about this data, especially as it's incomplete. I just I think I have two take home messages here. Um. Number one is that. Obviously, this is not an apples to apples comparison. Uh this is something I was talking about to Lisa earlier today, right? Marlborough as a district is not just high schools. They could share a lot of infrastructure between their schools, whereas AMSA, of course, does not. Um so I think there would be a decent argument. That maybe AMSA has to pay proportionally more um. More to things that are not teachers. But I do think that if we're if we're serious about. Closing this teacher pay gap that we know exists between us and Marlborough, seeing as we're in Marlborough. Um. I think one of the the ways we could measure that is by pushing this number up. Pushing it up quite far, if we can manage it. Um I think if we can show to teachers that not only how are we. Going to pay you more money, we are going to proportionally value more than we have valued you. Up until now. I think that would be a very powerful thing and I if personally, I think that's what we should be aiming for.
So I just want to make a comment just based on what Leanna just asked. Um I. I don't disagree, but I think one big piece of information that we're missing is um health benefits. Or or you know, just benefits in general. Um that's kind of my specialty for work. And I it's my understanding, just based on looking at some of our health insurance that we that we have at AMSA, it is pretty comprehensive. Maybe more comprehensive than what um some of these other school districts offer their teachers. So I don't disagree with you, but I think another piece of information that we, another column we might want to add is is benefits. And 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 you know what that's worth.
Yeah, absolutely. And and again, I don't mean for this to be sort of a comprehensive summary. This is, I mean, I can't, I think I still have one of them open. This is the data that DEES makes it very easy to find. Um so I figured it was a good starting point, but yes, absolutely. Any any look at this should also include benefits, should include. Paid time off and you know, other things. I I mean, I think this is the point, right? We really. If we really want to understand this number, we need a whole picture, both of AMSA and of Marlborough, and that that is going to take some time to compile.
Yep, I agree one hundred percent.
All right, I that's about all I came to say, so.
Well, one thing I would say based on that comment, so first of all, thank you because we have. In the past and in the recent past, when we talk about strategic planning and one of our key goals as a board is to. You know, we we were always careful about how we phrase the goal because our intention is to move salaries to. We call it parity. We call it, you know, something that's comparable to other, you know, what what is comparable, what teachers would consider uh working instead of AMSA. And we we phrased the goal to be moved closer towards because we said we know it's a challenge. Uh not only to compare apples to apples, but also to make commitments. Like I don't want to stand here and say, oh, yeah, we're gonna fix this. We're gonna make it. Fifty percent of our budget when that could have consequences for other parts of the school. So we do. Think it's important, number one, in teachers' minds, which means that it should be. Number one in the board's mind and and administration as well, making that happen. So I I agree with that and you know. We will work on this. Like you said, this year is important because of that uh. The contract negotiation. But one of the things we said when we set that goal is that. We need a better picture of the market and this table is as far as I've seen that we actually looked at stuff. Uh when it comes to that comparison. So I I do think that it's important for us to take this data and complement it in whatever way we think is is. Necessary and like Phyllis' recommendation is could be one of many. Uh so it is a challenge for us in the board to take this on as one of our goals, which, you know, I'll. It's one of the things that we'll we'll talk about more. In in the upcoming weeks, you know, how do we stay on top of our strategic plan and whatnot? So this this will be a big part of that. So. Again, thank you for doing the homework or showing us, you know, one way of looking at the data, which I think is the beginning of a of a fruitful conversation to get closer to that. Uh so that's my first reaction. The other one is like, I think the other thing that this highlights is the difference between charter schools and the the districts, you know, the other districts. And part of that is the kinds of things that the charter school needs to do with our budget. That the districts have other sources of or resources for. So uh it I'm glad we're not totally off the. The um um the range with when it comes to compare ourselves to other charter schools. And that would have been a big problem, but that's no excuse. So, you know, we definitely should. Make sure that teachers feel respected and appreciated uh in more ways than one, but at the very least, one entirely. So I agree, it's an important thing to look at and and this helps uh get the conversation further along.
And I think, I guess, if I could just add one thing, um something that. That I was talking about with Lisa today that I I never thought of in these terms until I had to say it out loud to her and actually formulate it into words. Um I think. We were talking about what what sort of made AMSA unique, what I thought AMSA did well. Um and I think one of those things is hiring people who. Uh don't necessarily have a background in education or have a degree in education, but who instead have degrees. In the fields that they teach or have industry experience, for example, in in the fields that they are going to teach. Um. I I very much like that we do that. I mean, perhaps that's biased because I am one of those people. But I I've always thought, ever since I was a student at AMSA, that. It was cool that we did that. It served the school well. But I think. Doing that sort of requires that we pay salaries that um. That are not necessarily competitive, because a lot of times that's not possible, but at least. Are not very far below what industry would pay. I know this very well, coming from teaching computer science, right? Like. I have plenty of friends who got their bachelor's degree in computer science, just like me, and then straight out of college for making six figures. Uh and it doesn't matter how much you love kids. If our starting salary is fifty thousand a year, it's like, do you love kids enough? For go fifty thousand more dollars a year? Um that's a pretty, pretty tough pill to swallow. So. And and again, this is not me saying that we should be paying our comp side teachers six figures, but it is, it is. Just shrugged. Um it it is something, it is sort of a. What's the word I'm looking for here? It is a tension that we should consider if that those are the sorts of teachers we want to attract and keep.
Yep. Excellent. Any comments from the rest of the board or responses? You don't have to, but just.
Well, only that I appreciate having this conversation and have this discussion. I know that Dr. Bobley. Has certainly expressed her own opinions and concerns about this area and is looking into it. I think. Whatever the board can do to support the goals that we're looking for is what I'd be hopeful to achieve along with. Whatever partnership you need as you're going forward on this, because it is something, there's definitely a topic that's dear to the board's heart. We have talked about this. Um. But I know we definitely need partnership with the administration to be able to achieve those goals. And so. Thank you for bringing it up, Greg, and I think we should keep this front and center as we go forward.
Excellent. All right. Anybody else? Any other comments? Then moving on to chair business. Um I guess the chair will have a couple of things to say today. Uh one, I'm gonna preamble a little bit, the the family and staff survey update. So normally, we would do this. Earlier in the school, actually within the school year and and not um now in July. The reason we kind of got delayed, if you remember, when we first sent out the surveys, uh it seems that. That not everybody, not all the families got the notification, so we decided to extend the timeline. Of um when the surveys were running. And then anyway, we we didn't get the results until. Um you know, or getting results ready to share until now. So we have recently gone through that. We went through the comments. And have a bit of a presentation as you might be accustomed to from previous years. On summarizing that um the survey data. For those of you that might not be familiar with the survey or for our new board members. This is something that we do every year. And there are other surveys or other instruments or other ways that the administration and the rest of the school gets feedback from our families, from our staff. This one specifically is a, let me see if I can move the. This one specifically is a board run survey. So um the historical intention. Is to um. To make sure that there's a there's a uh a way to provide feedback directly to the board about what how this school's going. So we use, uh first of all, can you guys confirm you see my spring, spring twenty twenty-three survey somewhere? Okay. So um the um the we use a um. A system or a service that that gives that survey and provides trending and benchmarking whatnot called Panorama. And we decided, I believe it was last year, a couple of years ago, to, we used to have two services a year. And we moved that to be only one a year to increase or to try to increase the participation and make it simpler on families and staff. So that's basically what what this is, you know, since that's spring twenty twenty-three, we we run it in April and again, extend it until May. And you know, we're just gonna talk about the results. So first thing I wanted to be clear about. Because it's the first thing that many might think about is what do we do with this? And do we take any action of what we hear? Because the last thing that we want is for anybody to think that. We're just going through the motions and then taking the 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 results and the output and. And moving on. We actually take action with this. And when I say we, this is everybody. Everybody has a part to play in addressing the concerns and or making any changes necessary based on the feedback that we get. So I'm I'm calling out the three different stakeholders that I've that I think are relevant for what we do with the surveys. So number one is administration. And this is something that I know Mike might be, maybe you'll have an opinion. I know that that Lisa was gonna talk to you specifically about, you know, some of the. The things brought up by the survey, but I I I know from experience from previous years that when there is a comment made. Particularly if it's a specific example, which I would argue that if you have an issue, if a parent has an issue with their student, um if there. You can bring it up through the survey, but definitely if if you want that to be addressed, it's it's better to. Go through the the normal protocol that we have to address in that concern. But for anything that shows up in the survey anyways. Mike uh always follows up on, you know, something that applies to the administrative part of things, um your executive director. And Dr. Mobley going forward, take action on that. So that's the first thing I would say. The board captures the feedback, but administration sees it and reviews it and takes action on that accordingly. Uh second is what do we do as a board? And I know that's been a topic of discussion all the time, you know, how much do we do as a board operationally? The board is a governance body, so we don't necessarily get involved into operational aspects, but what we look at with the survey is trending and of things that could. Mean, how do we change those policies? How do we change the uh the decisions that we make at the board level? Taken into account the what happens in the survey. So there are specific focus areas that we look at uh based on the survey. I'm calling out three there and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But that's what we do with that. And then and the feedback itself, we do read that feedback and and the comments. Um which is part of what influences and and gives clarity to the results that are the qualitative results of survey goals. And the third one, which I is just a reminder for everybody. We're all part of the solution. So families that when they see these results and anybody listening might consider. You know, how can I play a role in improving the community and the school? How can I play a role in helping with fundraising? This is a question we should all be asking ourselves. So I'm not saying we are leaving it up to the families to solve the problems of the schools or that's the concerns that are brought with the survey. But I am challenging everybody to think, how can I be part of the solution? Uh for things that are relevant for the families. And you know, when we get to a specific seal, it'll be more evident what that could mean. So three areas. And they're not new areas. They're not things that we haven't heard before, but there are things that came up in in enough frequency to to highlight. Uh what is academics, which is not surprising. It's not a bad thing and it's actually a great thing that SAMSA, we continue to challenge ourselves on whether or not we're achieving our standards for excellence. And academic rigor and whatnot. So if you take every comment and the the asks or the concerns. And categorize them by things that have to do with either. Where we're trending as far as our results or our outcomes from an academic perspective. Or changes that people are recommending or suggesting for curriculum or anything having to do with the actual learning experience. I would say it was the number one area where we got some feedback. So not surprising. I would hope this continues to be the case in AMSA because that we're gonna keep holding ourselves accountable in that regard. Second, which is more of a, I guess, recent trend in the last couple of years, is concerns about student behavior. We heard this both in the staff survey and the and the family survey. That there is a a declining student behavior that's impacting learning. We talked about this last year with Mike and, you know, what we saw coming back from COVID. And, you know, whether that's improving or not and the details on that. But just know that we're noting this. We know it's an issue and it's something that, that needs to be addressed. And the third one again, maybe tied to the other two is mental health. You know, how are we taking care of our students, not only to make sure that we maintain that academic rigor, but also at the same time, uh, take care of them, their, the stress levels and you know, how that mental health can actually improve their performance or whatnot. So again, there's arguments on different sides of these, these topics. There's things that we discuss passionately in our school all the time. But the three areas that if you told me what are the three things that we should be focusing on this year, these are the three things. I do wanna make a comment of participation or response rates because we would love to hear from more of you. So this is a comparison over the last four years. Uh, and you'll see that even though uh percentage wise on the staff side, we, we've stated about, you know, forty to fifty percent of, of staff participation. Um, it is not a hundred percent and it could be higher. There's a lot of reasons why this might be the case. There's a lot of things that we could do. We've actually talked in the survey task force on whether we wanna continue to make the survey shorter and easier to take because it used to be longer. We shortened it down. Uh, we reduced it to one survey a year and we're still getting what I would consider low participation rates. Uh, on the family side, it's a lower percentage because obviously the, the population is larger. But again, the decline is evident. So this could be interpreted in many ways. Um, some argument that could be made is that people respond to the survey when they have negative feedback to share. So if people are not responding to the survey, that might be that things are going well, but you know, we don't necessarily wanna make that assumption. We want to make sure we hear from as many people as possible. So I'm putting this as a challenge as, you know, maybe as we think about what do we do next year, what do we do differently? Driving this participation response rate should be one of our goals. So just pointing that out. Um, if anybody's curious why there's, you know, twenty twenty in the family side, we actually did not run the survey in twenty twenty. We were in the middle of COVID and didn't actually get to run the survey, but that's, that's why that, that hole is there. Uh, the next thing that we get from Panorama, this is the part that gets actually published on our website, is the, what they call favorable responses and there's different categories. I'm gonna caveat this by saying this helps in comparing year to year and with trending. But the definition of favorable, depending on the category, is very, very arbitrary. So sometimes it gives a, a wrong impression of things going well or going wrong, depending on the, the numbers high or low. So I wouldn't put too much weight on what the number means. What I do think is valuable, just because the way we measure every year is the same, is how does these different, how do these different categories change over a year? So if we look at the staff survey, you see a change over the different years about, for example, administration, the blue line. Um, you know, basically getting a high on twenty twenty one and taking a dip after that. It's still ending up in a, you know, positive rate of about seventy five percent, seventy something percent at the end. Uh, morale is another thing that we measure, is something that's hard to put in words and to measure qualitatively. Uh, sorry, quantitatively, but it is something again that, that uh can be compared year to year. Has increased since twenty nineteen, then again, took a, a little dip in twenty twenty three. I appreciate the fact that twenty twenty three was a tough year for changes and a lot of stuff going on at the school that could have affected how people responded to the morale side of things. Uh, but again, don't wanna get too much into over interpreting the number because the number doesn't necessarily tell the whole story. Um, on the family side, there's more categories, so this, this might be more of an eye chart. But the one thing that I would call out is that the family responses seem to be flatter. And by that, I just mean that the, the the percentages don't change a lot from year to year. And they're all around the same range. Uh, one thing I will call out just to explain what this means because the, the term might be confusing. There's a category within the Panorama survey that's called family support. And it does not mean how we support the families. It means how do families support the school? And the reason it's a lower rating, quote unquote, than everything else is because the, the question that gets asked there is, are you involved with fundraising efforts? And do you want to be involved fundraising efforts? And a lot of the families say, yes, we wanna do more, but in reality, no, we're not involved that much. So it's an opportunity. Um, you know, the more people get involved, the more, you know, the easier we're gonna achieve our goals from, from a development perspective. But that's, that's what that uh purple line in the bottom mean. It doesn't mean that it's necessarily bad and, and, you know, something that, that we need to be concerned about, but it's just the way that question is asked. And to that point, let me highlight, I mean, the, the, the survey has a lot of questions, so it's always hard to pick and choose what we're gonna show up here today, but I'm gonna highlight a couple of things from each one of them. One on the family side, um, is whether or not our parents feel that the students are being challenged academically in the way that you would expect AMC to challenge them. So it's a, I would say a positive result that, you know, eighty nine percent agree or strongly agree with that statement. There's about nine families that didn't have a strong opinion and about eight that felt that we do not. Right? So percentage wise, again, eighty nine percent of parents feel that we're meeting the mark. And this is the, the question I had mentioned about fundraising effort participation. Only nine percent of families are saying that they are involved in some level. Um, I, I would say forty percent at some level, but you know, nine percent are extremely required involved in a meaningful level. So again, this is something that we can pose as a challenge. And it's a way to say, well, we're all in this together to make sure that we can bring teachers to parity, that we can achieve our financial goals, that we can work in the building and all the, you know, all the things that we wanna do that require all the, of a community coming together and working on this. Again, just a data point. From the staff side, since we saw that dip in morale, I didn't wanna show the detail of how this question is asked. So the question simply say, overall, I feel that morale is positive and strong, right? This is a very subjective question because what is morale? How do you measure morale? But we're basically asking the staff, how do you feel? And in twenty twenty two, we had about seventy nine, eighty percent saying that we're positive, strong morale. That number went down to sixty three percent. So it's a dip on how many people are strongly or agreeing that their morale was positive. Uh, so we definitely wanna keep an eye on that. We wanna address that. We wanna make sure that we do what we can to improve morale. But the flip side is, even though the percentages are higher, you know, from four percent agreement to about seventeen percent, that sounds like a big dip. The difference between three respondents and ten respondents. Right? So seven more people are feeling that the morale is not strong. So it is not to be ignored, but it, putting the numbers, I think, puts things in perspective of, on, you know, the total population. And it's another reason why getting more responses is better because the more numbers we have, the more this makes sense to look at. So again, we do wanna address this. We wanna make sure that we improve the climate in the school and we continue to work on that. But sharing the specifics, I think, is helpful. There is one of the questions that I, is, is one of my, I think my attempts of making sure that we're staying close to our mission. We used to have a question that said, oh, do you believe AMC achieves its mission? And we actually changed it to actually state the mission. And we didn't tell anybody that that was the statement of our mission, but this is our mission. So if people disagree that we're not accomplishing this, then we're not accomplishing our mission. And it's always interesting. We have the same question or something phrased very similarly in the family survey and the staff survey, and it's interesting to compare how do respondents feel on both sides of the, of the survey. So family seems to be a little more positive on this than the staff, you know, seventy seven, you know, three quarters of the respondents are agree or strongly agree with the fact that we're, we're accomplishing our mission. Where the staff is closer to, um, you know, a little over half, you know, sixty percent. Uh, that is definitely something to keep an eye on. I could take a lot of guesses of why that is the case and, you know, how the staff feels about whether or not we're achieving our mission. Uh, but I'm gonna leave it at that. We'd be happy to discuss, uh, and, and there's definitely things that we can do and we should be doing around this. Again, academics being one of the top things that, that we need to focus on, I think is one of the things that are driving this. The other part, so this is kind of the, the quantitative part of the survey. The other part that I think is very interesting, it's, it's hard to go over a lot of, you know, we had, I forget the actual numbers, but uh, I may have put it on the slide. I don't think I put it on the slide. But we had a lot of, um, a lot of comments submitted. If you think about the numbers of all seven hundred responses on, on the family side, we do read all of those and the people on the task force go through the survey and try to summarize it. So what we didn't hear is pick one question. There's one question at the end. It's an open ended question that asks very specifically, pick one thing, what's the most important issue that AMC needs to focus on? And if there was something really important and, and critical and, you know, crisis going on at the school, everybody would agree on the answer. But as you would expect, we get a lot of answers. We get a lot of different answers. Actually, in the same response, sometimes we get more than one answer. Even though we're asking for the most important thing. Uh, but what does help here, we did a little bit of analysis here, if you see the word tag, is uh categorizing the, the topic, right? And again, like we said at the beginning, academics, behavior, and mental health were the most frequent topics. And so the, the frequency here is how many comments we receive as an answer of this question that academics was one of the things to focus on, the, the most important thing and behavior, et cetera. So again, those were the top three for families. You'll see community was another one. There's a lot of comments about how do we maintain a sense of community? How do we do more with non-core towns, et cetera, et cetera. So those are um important comments. All of them have good suggestions we can talk about. But again, academics, behavior, and mental health. Uh, if you were to guess what the top three on the staff were, you will probably not be wrong because the staff actually agrees with the families, academics, mental health, behavior. And it's a bit of a tie between mental health, behavior. Again, low numbers, maybe we're overthinking this, but uh, it is the same top three. And the number four was the AD transition. And I, you know, Dr. Mobley is very uh aware of that and, 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 you know, we, we trust that this will be something, if you remember the timing of this was back in in April when we had just made the decision. So most people hadn't had the chance to actually meet Dr. Mobley and, and work with her. And hopefully all these concerns will be addressed as, as, you know, time goes by and people get to know her. But um, that was number four. And then, you know, again, just five comments having to do with that and, and the search process actually specifically. But again, academics, mental health, and behavior was a top three topics. Last thing, and I know this is kind of, I don't know if my timekeeper will, will keep me honest, but um I did wanna share some specific comments. And part of the reason I like doing this is to make sure that you know that we read it. So if you wrote this, you know that we read it. Uh, we ask for suggestions. And sometimes it's hard to get specific and concrete suggestions from the comments, you know, it's, it's good to get feedback on how you feel about things are going. But it's also good to get specific actions and things that we can change in the school. So I, I'm not calling out these to say that we're gonna implement that or that we think are good or bad ideas. I'm just calling them out to say somebody actually shared a specific thing that we can consider. And again, it's been shared with administration and we all know that, that's things to be considered. So things around uh offering more classes like business and accounting and some parents saying there's a lot of demand for the ones that we already have and calling out specific classes and specific teachers that do a great job in those classes. But then say we want more of that. And then maybe that could be one of those things that make uh AMC more attractive and our students to be better prepared uh to take more of those classes. So I, you know, I, I do think that's an important uh um thing to keep in my, my curriculum perspective. It's a good recommendation. Uh, there's also comments about being creative about um students that want more, that want to take a higher level courses and whatnot, but doing uh different things to, to provide more advanced opportunities. Again, there's a lot of comments and, and suggestion around the academic side of things. There's also concerns. So like I said earlier, most people that uh when, when you feel things are going great, they may not respond to the survey, but when they have an opinion to share, they share it. So it's interesting that we talked about AI at the beginning of the meeting today. That was one of the comments that we need to consider and wait into the, what, what the impacts of that is gonna be to education and to AMC specifically. So noted. And as you can see, we already talked about that. Um, there's a question about what the board is doing and, and, you know, whether or not, if you remember, we had a question about how people feel that the board is focusing, if we're focusing on the right things. And the most common answer is that people don't know what the board is or what the board does and, and how we do what we do. So that is on us. It's one of our challenges and one of our goals to do better at communicating and explaining to everybody what the role of the board is and what it isn't. But one specific comment that caught my eye was that the board has, doesn't have a lot of visibility in teachers' issues. And then they collab, our involvement in selection of AD, which is definitely part of what we do. It's, you know, part of our job as a board is to choose AD. But that, that also implies that we get into specific uh teacher issues. So I think I'm gonna generalize this to mean issues that, that affect teachers, like the salary discussion we were just having and things like that. That's definitely something we, we should be talking about. But specific teacher issues, I would say it's, it's an operational thing that, that we should not be getting into. And it's definitely on the administration side. But point taken, the board becomes hyper um visible and people see more of what we do as a board when something big like the business decision that we have to make about the buildings or when we have to select a new executive director because our previous executive director retired. So again, these comments were expected as far as how we work in the board, but I do wanna share that. Um, again, behavioral issues were mentioned uh both for the families and teachers saying, hey, please give us more tools to deal with, with those behavioral issues. So again, that, those are good recommendations and it's good that that's been shared. And last but not least, I did wanna end on a positive note, which there are positive comments. So people, there's, there's some people, a lot of people that use the opportunity to use the survey to say how much they like AMC, how good of a fit it is for the student. Um, I'll let you read the specifics there, but you know, there's one comment about a sixth grader that's really thriving and, you know, comparing to their, their previous school, they're more challenged and every day and, you know, they, they feel more comfortable um in day-to-day events in the school. I, I know there's a lot of comments about how we can do a special education better. There's also positive comments about the help it has been for what I would assume is a parent that uses their services and, and has special needs. So it's good to hear that. And the teachers as well had, had positive comments, feeling their support. One of the things that, that we like is to hear that you feel empowered as a teacher to take risks, to make mistakes and to try different things. Uh, because that's part of what we do as a charter school is to try new things and, and lay you the flexibility to do that. So somebody was appreciating the fact that they're able to, uh, at AMC. So again, there's more than three positive comments, but I wanted to pick a few to highlight the fact that there is many. So the last thing I'm gonna say, things that we should do differently next year, you know, how are we gonna look at the survey? I do invite board members to consider being part of the survey task force or running the survey task force. Uh, because I, you know, speaking for myself, when I joined the board, I was not a parent of the school, so I didn't really have any experience with AMC. And I joined the survey task force to get that perspective and to try to get exposed to what's happening in the school and, and helping a lot to kind of see it firsthand. So I would suggest, you know, new board members or existing board members to consider uh doing that. But one of the things that we should be doing is focusing on participation. So again, the, the low numbers of how many people participate to have us questioning, should we keep doing this? Should we keep doing this the same way? Should we use the same tools? So we don't have to answer the, those questions now. But I'm gonna throw out the challenge as we think about running this again in the spring. Actually, the timing of the survey is another thing up for discussion. Uh, when we run this again, um, how do we drive participation? So I think I talked for more than ten minutes that we had on the agenda. Uh, but I, I do wanna make sure that everybody knows that we consider your feedback and there, you know, give a quick summary of that.
We're doing okay time-wise at all.
Was that working? Okay. Any, any comments or any questions or anything, anybody wants to dive deeper on the process of the survey or the results themselves? I see Padman just unmute, so go ahead, Padman.
Um, so one of the things that like, you know, Greg, Greg being a data science person and I worked in that part. We keep talking about the questions, like, you know, faculty survey questions over the years. This is one thing. The same, I see value in asking the same questions, but there are, just like you said, there are certain questions uh that are kind of repetitive and there is, that we need to dig more for more clarity, like, you know, what exactly are we trying to ask and so that we can quantify certain things, for example, morale kind of thing. I know it is very difficult to quantify that morale. But there are ways to come up with questions that can actually allow us to draw some conclusions, analyze it, and then draw some conclusions from it in a, in a quantifiable way. And I think that needs to be addressed. Um, and Greg, uh, you gave me a good example of that when we talked before. So do you wanna talk about it for us?
I, I actually don't know what you're referring to.
The poll stuff that you're saying, like in the political polling stuff.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah, it's, it's interesting. It's something I wanna do potentially some more reading about, but there, like, this is, this is a very known problem in polling. It has to do with something called like non-response bias. Row, you sort of alluded to it. I don't, I don't know if it was knowingly or not, but the idea that like participation in polling is going down and how to interpret that be, because it could be people just have nothing to complain about or, or have no strong feelings one way or the other. or or have no strong feelings one way or the other, that they're just apathetic. Um I I just know I, for those of you who know me, I'm a bit of a political junkie. Um I I know of this occurring in other sort of polling contexts. And I'm wondering if there might not be something, some sort of solutions or workarounds for it that I don't know about, but that exists.
Yeah. So I would say um for my day job, my company has invested, there's a specific um experienced management platform, as we call it, that one of the the where it was created was out of academia and trying to create instruments that help you gather, you know, prove a hypothesis or whatever and and do it in a in a tested way, tested meaning that you you are addressing those limitations of how you do the, how you run the surveys. And it's an, it it's a whole field of study, right? So what we rely on, I I mentioned Panorama as a vendor, they actually in theory help us fill those surveys and build the questions and whatnot. And they, the way they build those questions are supposed to address that. But it's such a broad catalog that it ends up being a very long survey. And we always say, well, we want to keep that question because if we do, then we get benchmark against other schools and all that. And then you end up hurting the response rate because we have a seventy-five question survey. So it, again, it's a good discussion. I think we should have that before we define the questions for the next year and the next time we run the survey.
Yeah, I I do understand that it's a long survey, totally that one. And then baking it up as the at the beginning of the year versus at the end of the year. But something to compare from the beginning of the year versus end of the year is also been an issue. Um but again, with the limited timing that we have, where is the implement? What are the plan of act, what are the actions that were taken? It's kind of a follow-up. That never seems to be happening through in a year rather than it happens year to year. And like it hap, it's happening right now. It's happening in July. It doesn't necessarily give us the opportunity to discuss things and then actually act upon it for the upcoming year.
Right. And again, we've discussed that in the task force. And the flip side of that is you run a survey with the families since September and a lot of them say, well, I'm just got to AMSA. I have, I don't have an opinion. I haven't really, you know, it's the beginning of the school year. So yeah, there's, there's all those things to balance out.
This is just a comment, by the way. I do understand, I've been following all of this over years. I totally understand, like, you know, what is involved and everything. But I think it is important to have it as a back of our mind to constantly think about it so that if there are any improvements that needs to be made or anything that can be considered should be considered in the way it should.
Yep. All right. Any other comments, reactions?
Well, I can um speak very briefly to the the comments around middle school behavior picking up. Um I believe that's, I believe that's true. I think our administration, our teachers are aware of that. Parents are obviously aware of that as well. I think since April of twenty twenty-one, when we returned from, you know, being a full virtual school for quite a while there, I think we have seen some increases. Um I believe we've gotten better over the last few years since then. However, I do want everybody to know, whoever's out there listening, um that we are aware and we do know that we need to step it up in this area. Um I think that we've had some discussions with, I've had some discussions with Anthony Montes and our dean of students over there in the uh for the lower school, for middle school. Um and I think one of the areas where we see the most significant, the significant behavioral issues, it's, I mean, things do happen in the classroom, but I think the majority of significant issues are occurring more in the communal areas, cafeterias, hallway activity or uh situations that are brought in from weekend activity or non-school operating hour activity, if you will, uh through social media, group text messages, things of that nature that trickles its way or finds its way into into the school. Um I feel like almost every incident that we deal with uh across the board, probably the case for most high schools and middle schools in the country, seems like most things stem from the cell phone. Most things stem from social media, uh something that, something in the written form. And then it's brought, you know, into the school environment and things are handled in different ways by students. So there's a couple of different ways we're trying to deal with that. We also, like many other schools, have seen an increase in vaping and things of that nature uh in our bathrooms. Um so our approach for this upcoming year is to really focus on increasing supervision uh in the morning intake periods, uh hallway activity, between class periods, uh also dismissal time and to uh lunch duty as well in the cafeteria and to have more um staff present and to hopefully model a behavior, set the expectations and model the behavior that we would expect or that we do expect at our school. I know our department chairs are uh also, they're willing and um will be attempting to, um or not attempting to. They want to be involved in working with the middle school teachers uh when we get back in August to talk with them about classroom management uh techniques and kind of setting the tone as we start up the next school year. So I just wanted to throw that, throw that out there. That's very brief. Uh there's a lot more to it, but we are aware, we agree. I don't want anybody out there to think that we're just seeing this word, big word behavior on your chart there and and just kind of like not, I didn't want to get, let that go on untouched for tonight.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, and I made that comment at the beginning, you know, if this, the administration sees this and action is taken, whether we actively talk about it or not in the board meeting. So thank you for the detail. All right, any other comments about the survey? All right. Again, like I said, it's an intentional way of trying to gather feedback by the board. So um we'll keep doing it, we'll find better ways of doing that and, you know, any comments are helpful. Uh all right, um next in the agenda is our board self-assessment update. Uh and I appreciate the fact that, you know, we have new board members that may not have participated on this, but I'm just going to bring up the actual tool. So um for just to be clear, what we mean by the board assessment, there is a tool that we get with Board on Track that is a self-assessment where we try to look at how we run our meetings, how we feel as a board, how are we accomplishing the things that Board on Track recommends for being a highly effective board? And we've talked about it in the past, we talked about it in the last meeting, and we sent out the instrument at the end of the last board meeting, I believe, in the beginning of June. I gotta say, you know, speaking of surveys, this one was, you see here forty-one percent of our board responding it. Granted, this is the middle of the summer and there's a couple of board members that are no longer in the board, like Nick's uh term that ended in June. So I don't believe he responded to um to the survey. So we could either say, let's, let's all participate or just look, look, just look at the results. I actually don't think the results will move much if for more participation. So I would recommend we just look at what we got here. Now I'll do a quick overview. I don't think um there's going to be a lot of surprises here unless anybody has a strong opinion of this. For those of you that have seen this before, you might be more familiar with what we're looking at. Uh but does anybody need any further explanation of what this is or why we do it? No, all right, I figure. So the categories, so we get an overall grade of the maturity level of the board. So we get a three and I believe that's a three out of four or five, yeah, it's a three out of five. So we we have some areas that we can do some work. And again, just like the surveys, we can pick a couple of things to take us, things to focus on. The categories of what this overview goes through is how we run board meetings, that we structure the board, you know, how do we understand finances, the goals, accountability, et cetera. And you'll see development is one that stands out and we can talk more about that. I think we are very well uh posed to address this and improve this. But um that's one of those. And then how we work with the executive director and the the maturity of our our work as a as a team. So the the big summary that can show you shows kind of where we land. You know, this is kind of an average of the responses uh that we got for each one of these areas. And how we, and again, this is ourselves, we grading ourselves on how we're doing the things. Again, I can call out development as one thing to focus on. And I'm going to go into the detail of how this gets um asked. You know, so there's questions about whether we're philosophically aligned about development and have a plan and are putting ourselves, you know, holding ourselves accountable to a development plan. I I think these are things that we have talked about. So I, we can continue to work on that. We have made investments on how do we are going to address, especially with the capital campaign. But I think we're just grading ourselves to to say, you know, we we do want to make this a priority for the board. So one area that I thought was worth highlighting, just because it was a one, grade one out of five. Um if I were to pick the other one, you know, on the executive director's side, which we have as an emerging and it was whether we prioritize governance. And, you know, this is, I think, goes back to the discussion we keep having about what is the board's role versus the ED role. And earlier this year, we had a, what I believe was a good discussion about how to draw that line and how to help. We did uh make some efforts in in governance to talk about succession planning. So there's, there's been some movement there. I think once we share more about what that means and how we have documented some of that, maybe we'll feel better about how we are or where we are with this. Obviously, it was tough to look at that in the middle of a transition, so that's also understandable. And then the other thing that we keep challenging ourselves is how do we help the board? Especially now having two new board members. How do we make sure we onboard them quickly to understand what does it mean to be a board? What are our responsibilities and what kinds of knowledge do we think is important for us to have? And we have talked a little bit about that in governance, but I think it's a challenge and we need to continue to remind ourselves on how do we um how do we operationalize it and how do we, you know, take action for for fixing some of this? So I'm going to leave it at that unless somebody wants to dive deeper in any of the other areas. But um I think this is a helpful instrument. It's more helpful when more of us respond, but we can definitely continue to look at this as we look at how do we work better together as a team on the board. All right, Jill, I know you've looked at this in the past. I don't know if you saw the results already or or have any comments.
Yeah, so I think you're right. Four out of ten isn't going to give us a good um, a good read on this. The the three prior that I was in charge of, you know, one, we had perfect attendance. Then then even last year, we only missed two. So I would maybe suggest that you require the board to do this because like the things that you're showing that are poor, we had some excellence last year, right? You know, so you're getting like, I think three years in a row, the results were fairly similar and and your results that you're showing are i- in some areas quite different than over the past three years. So I I feel like you might want to get everybody's opinion. Not that we need to present it again, but just have the information stored in Board on Track. So we have an accurate history.
That's helpful. And um one of the things that I was saving to mention later, but Board on Track is not only, I I know I've said this before, but just to make sure everybody hears this, it's not only a tool on the website, it's also services. So we get consulting, advice and coaching from Board on Track. And we, we wanted to leave the summer to focus on the decisions we need to make over the summer, but then come back probably in the October meeting, have a guest speaker from Board on Track walk through, not necessarily the website or the tools, but how we can be more effective board and do a little bit of board training. So um that could be a way that we can, so if everybody responds to this, we don't have to review the results together. But, you know, everybody will have access to it. It's the, the assessment is on the tool that everybody uh should be able to log into. So I think it's a good idea. It's still open. We haven't closed it yet, so I guess I'll put it as a challenge. Of course, you know, the the new board members will find it harder to have an opinion about how the board operates unless you have a strong opinion after this one meeting. But um it, I think it's a good idea. So yes, I'll, I'll leave it open and I guess I'll challenge everybody that hasn't participated yet to join the rest of us and providing the feedback. And then we'll look at, we'll put that as an action item, Sarah. Any other comments, reactions? All right. It's seven forty-seven in the evening. I think the the excitement about looking at our 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 board assessment could be waning. All right, so that's that. Um the next item on the agenda, and thank you, Jill, for that feedback. I think that that um it's good history. Um update on ED goals. So part of what we do at the beginning of the school year is set uh goals for our executive director. Uh the update I can share with everybody is that the ED support task force met with Lisa, well, met with Lisa first to welcome her when she was first in the school that first week. And then we met, uh I believe it was this week, we had another meeting where we specifically talked about her goals. So she came with an idea or um, you know, quick sketch of what she thought could be her focus areas. Uh it's great to see that she organized things aligned with our core values. So the goals follow the core values and follow the kinds of things that we want to make sure are are important and reflected of what we're going to work on this year. And we had a bit of a discussion about how to measure them and whatnot. So I expect that we're going to finalize those before the next board meeting, which we'll talk about when that next board meeting is going to be. But that will be in the agenda for the next board meeting is to approve the the final goals. So again, we'll share those in advance so everybody can look at them and and share any comments or questions when we get together at the board meeting. But that, that's where we are, that that's where we are with the executive director goals. Which brings me to talking about the next board meeting. So I believe last time we talked, we said we would not have a full board meeting in August. But what we have discussed in a, a, these discussed in governance and and I will propose that there will be a special meeting, and I think Lisa already mentioned this, but there will be a special meeting in August thirty-first. We will not have a full agenda like we do with all the uh committee reports, et cetera. But we do want to focus that meeting on just reviewing the financials before making a decision for the construction project. We will not be ready to make a decision on that meeting because then we will still not have received all the bids and and have that guaranteed maximum price. But we thought it was important to make sure that we met as a board, to make sure that everybody was clear. At least having an idea beforehand, how we would make the decision would help so that decision becomes less, you know, an easier thing to to say, okay, if we're close, well, how are we going to deal with it? So that's why we're proposing having that special meeting and that would be the only item on that agenda, other than approving the ED goals um on August thirty-first. And we'll do that remotely as well, unless anybody wants to do it otherwise. But I feel like doing remote meetings seems to be the easiest way, at least in the summer. And then our next board meeting will be the earliest that we can make the decision without necessarily, or I would say the latest we can make the decision without affecting the timeline on the project if we decide to move forward. So we, if you remember that timeline from last time we discussed that we're going to receive a bunch of bits and and details um mid-September, like the week of September eleventh. And then we are proposing to have the board meeting on Friday. And I think at least in governance, we were okay with that, meeting on a Friday evening to to make the decision. So it will be a regular board meeting, but the focus will be to make that decision on uh on the construction project on September fifteenth, which is a Friday. So I just wanted to share those to to keep in your calendars. Of course, there'll be postings and there'll be a board uh meeting calendar. But um that's what I'm proposing. And if anybody feels strongly that that's my idea, let me know. But otherwise, that that's where we're at. Any comments about your business or anything else that we talked about in the last twenty minutes? All right, then we come over to the committee reports. Uh so I'll turn it over to Bella for the finance committee update, unless you want to turn it over to Leanna, Adam. Roger's going on, yeah.
Yeah, I was surprised, I guess I didn't focus on that part of the agenda. Um I'm going to turn it over to Leanna, but we we did review the 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 year on financials.
Yes, and we have them attached in the in the packet.
Yeah, so we had a really good year financially. Um we had, ended up with a total revenue amount of seventeen million, five twenty-eight uh versus total expense of sixteen million, five fifty-eight for a surplus of nine hundred and seventy thousand versus our plan, which was five hundred and nine thousand. So we had a very good, solid um uh financial year. Um just keep in mind, this is still a soft close. I'm still working through the end of the year adjustments with the auditors. Um so there could be some changes to this number, but I don't anticipate anything material at this point in time.
Right. And I know there's been a couple of finance meetings and um discussion about specific, about the project and, you know, the finances that that we're going to be looking at when we get together in September, right?
Yeah, we're putting together a um capital expense um worksheet, which will um identify all of the major projects that we have uh coming down the pipe for the next five years just so that you can all um have that knowledge when we go to vote on the um, the full building project number. on the, um, the full building project number.
Okay. Anything else, Bella or anybody else that participated in finance? I think there'll be a more interesting conversation in August. Thank you for that. I'm sorry, Bella, for putting you on the spot.
I mean.
Should have realized that Roger wasn't gonna make this meeting to, to run the, the report. Which actually brings me to education. Did, did anybody else, Evan, did you participate in the ED committee? Was there an ED committee meeting since June?
Uh, I'm not sure if there was one. I think there was one early on, like the first week of the month, I wasn't able to attend, um, but.
Alright, maybe we can skip that report since Roger's not here. Unless anybody attended and wants to share. Uh, which brings me to governance and Sheila, I probably should have put you on the top of the list, I'm just seeing your comment about. Uh, I don't know, you, you, you just came back on, right?
I, I'm back, I've been on the whole time, but I was, I was on route and now I'm stationary again.
Alright.
Um, so governance net, we went over the revisions to the handbook that you just saw. Um, we do have a few more things we're working on with regard to um, some policies and procedures that will be coming to, um, in the future, but I think those are the big, the handbook was the big update, um, from us, and as Raul stated, when we were talking about succession planning and board composition, um, we, we have refined some of the documents, the board, um, the board of trustees' job description and, and, um, some other documents that we can present to and make sure, I think they are up on Board on Track, but, um, we can do that in the, in the future too, maybe in the next meeting, just to make sure people have them and that way you're reaching out to your networks about prospective board members and what we're looking for, but I think that's about it from us, unless anyone wants to add anything from governance.
Nope, you got, I mean, we did talk about the handbook and, and the, um, the annual report in the last meeting, so, but we already covered that. Excellent, and I think Maura mentioned that the development, uh, committee meeting was postponed, so unless you wanna add anything that, that would probably be the report.
Uh, yeah, nope, that's it, date to be determined.
Excellent, alright. Anything else, any other business agenda items that anybody would like to bring forward this time? There is one specific thing in other business that I wanna bring up, which I think is very important, very exciting. Um, we, we were discussing over email, uh, the idea of getting together as a board outside of a board meeting, which we've always been very careful about because of the open meeting law, but we are agreeing of doing that just for the sake of cordiality and you know, welcoming our new board members and, you know, the new people that are working together as a team as a board. We're trying to find a time to do that, and I sent out a doodle over email. It didn't seem to be conclusive on where it would be a good time to, uh, to meet, so what I would suggest is that maybe we wait until the school year starts, because the summer seems to be a harder time to, uh, make this happen. Um, maybe the weather will be better, maybe it'll be worse, I don't know. If you wanna do something outside, but again, the intention is to do something that does not include any kind of agenda items on AMSA or any kind of deliberation, because, um, we would have to post that meeting as a, as a board meeting. But just to get together as a team and get to know each other better and welcome our new board members, et cetera. So there's nothing specific, I guess I'd say, I would say about those plans, just because I didn't see a pattern on where we can make most of us, uh, available for that. So unless anybody has any suggestions of what time would be good, I think we should wait until September for that. Is that, yeah, I'm seeing agreement? Okay. Do you think it's a good idea, first of all? Yes, alright. So I, I definitely do, and especially since we're meeting remotely so many times, it's harder to kind of have the conversations inside and getting to know each other whatnot, which I do think is a valuable thing about working as a team. So more update on that, I guess, uh, as we get closer to, to September, or, you know, when the school starts. With nothing else left in the agenda, I'm gonna consider a motion to move into executive session. Uh, we, the purpose of the executive session is to discuss strategy, uh, with respect to the collective bargaining. Uh, as doing so in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board. The board will not reconvene and we will be, uh, inviting Leanna, Lisa and Mike for that meeting. Did I miss anybody? And Greg, your excuse from the executive session as a teacher?
Yeah, I, I'm never sure when the proper time is to interrupt or accuse myself, but yes.
Yes, so, so thank you, uh, for that, so I will take a motion to go into executive session.
Is Joe Bartolos joining us?
Good question.
You just name him, just in case.
Okay, I'm also inviting Joe Bartolos, just in case he might.
Whether he shows up or not, yeah.
Yes, okay, thank you. Will somebody let him know that we are going into executive session?
I'll make a motion, Raul.
Okay, motion by Maura.
I'll second Bella.
Go to Bella. And just because she's waving, I'll say bye to Padmanja, thank you for joining us and your feedback and your participation today. And thanks again, Greg.
I would also like to, uh, just thank Darren for, uh, catching that, because that was important in the annual report, and we rely on other eyes, so thank you very much.
I'm sure Marcy will appreciate.
I can't, I don't know why, I forgot, I don't know.
It's all good. Alright.
All the names?
Yes, please.
Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Erin Rose?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Gregory?
Absaying, correct? That's the correct, correct thing to do.
Sure.
Jill?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Samini Sampat?
Yes.
Yeah, the motion passes.